Welcome to the 2020 Marco Island City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the Marco Island Area Chamber of Commerce, the Marco Island Area Association of Realtors, and the Marco Island Area Civic Association. Thank you all for being here in support of informed voting. And thank you to our city for providing the facilities and staff to allow these three groups to present this forum to the voters of Marco Island. My name is William G. Morris. I am an attorney with offices, my home, and family on Marco Island for over thirty years. I am also the Board Attorney for Marco Island Area Association of Realtors. I am your moderator tonight. We have a very full agenda, so I will get right to it and explain tonight's procedures. This evening, we have five candidates, five questions that will be asked in five rounds. Each candidate will be afforded the opportunity to address all five questions in random order. The questions are of general nature that are of interest to all island residents and businesses. Candidates have two minutes to respond to each question. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves to the audience before the questions begin. Each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement at the end of the evening after the question period. The timekeepers will provide notice to the candidates at the one-minute mark and again when thirty seconds remain. We will be taking questions from the viewing audience via the email shown at the bottom of your screen. We will have a representative from each organization reviewing the questions to make sure the questions have not already been addressed and that they are appropriate for issues to be considered in this election. Okay. I've just been advised that there's a two-minute opening, so we'll do a two-minute opening rather than a one. So let's get started. This time, Mr. Blana.
Hello, I'm Rich Blana, and I'm running for City Council on Marco Island. Always, there you go. Hello, I'm Rich Blana, and I'm running for City Council on Marco Island because I've always been interested in politics, and I finally have the time and the resources at this point in my life to run. I've raised two children, gone through three different careers, and had a successful forty-nine year marriage, and I'm looking for the next challenge in my life. I think this is a really exciting time to run for office on Marco. We have a new city manager, a new assistant city manager, a new police chief, a new fire chief, and five new city councillors. I think change is in the air, and I'd like to be part of it. If I'm elected for city council, I'd like to do five things. I'd like to clean up the waterways and protect our beach. I'd like to promote smart business development and redevelopment. I'd like to expand our parks and recreational activities and open space. Getting the warning. I'd like to promote that or continue to promote our small-town character, and I'll do everything, if elected, to fulfill those promises. Thanks for the opportunity to run.
Thank you. Mr. Graffoni.
Good evening to all the Marco Island citizens who are tuning in tonight, and thank you to all the sponsoring organizations as well as our moderator, Bill Morris. I know you're going to do a better job than Chris Wallace tonight. I'm Jared Graffoni, and, you know, I'm running for city council for reelection. I've been on Marco Island since 2007. I live here with my wife Elsa and our three children, Calvin, Tosca, and Lorenzo, who I know are watching tonight at home. Hey, guys. I'm the only candidate running with experience on our city council, and that is a fact that's become all the more important over the last couple days. When I ran in 2016, I pledged to our citizens that I would keep our tax rate low and that I would put more money in our citizens' pockets. Over the last four years, we've lowered the property tax rate every single year, and we've cut or eliminated a number of other taxes on Marco Island. I also pledged that I would be the most active and involved city councillor. And if you've been around Marco Island, you've seen me, my family, and my wife helping, supporting, and participating in everything that helps make Marco Island such a wonderful place to live. I've met the unique challenges that our island faces, and I look forward to meeting future ones as a proven and successful advocate for lower taxes, fiscal accountability, for protection of our island wildlife and environment, for responsible budgeting based on citizen priorities, and protection of our individual and property rights. Over the next four years, with your vote and support, we can work together on the issues of importance that are going to be facing our island, but all of them must be addressed with calm, positive, fact-based, and community-oriented leadership. And that's the type of leadership that I've brought to city council from day one. So I'm asking for your vote and support. I'm committed to our community and our shared future. Let's get it done. Thank you, Marco Island.
Thank you. Mr. Hindle.
Hello, I'm Ferris Hindle.
Hindle.
Hindle. I've invested in the island, not monetarily, but emotionally and timewise. I'm invested in the waterways. I've been working diligently to help protect and clean our waterways. Clearly the most qualified, experienced candidate to do that, sitting on this candidate forum. Also, I'm invested in the neighborhoods. No, I don't have monetary interest. I'm not trying to make any money. What I'm trying to do is bring back a sense of civility, a sense of peace, a sense of ownership. Our neighborhoods are being destroyed by party houses, part-time rentals. People are being shut out of their lanais. They can't use their pools. They can't go to sleep at night because of the racket. Now, there's been a lot of time to fix this problem, but nobody has, so I have to step up. Not because it's going to be fun to run. It's not fun at all. I'm alone. But I'm running for you and for your neighborhood. Did you know your waterways have been declared impaired? Yes, they have, and that's a very serious matter. We'd better get a question on that, and I'll explain it. I'll explain why I'm clearly the best person for the waterways. Now, when we talk about lowering taxes, I'm going to explain to you what being a fiscal conservative really is. When you lower your tax rate, you don't lower your taxes, and I'll explain that to you. Thank you. I'm Ferris Hindle, and I'm for you.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin.
Hi, I'm Becky Irwin, and I'm running for city council. Thank you, Micah, Mayor, and the chamber for providing this very important forum. Our family lived on Marco Island almost forty years ago in 1981, when we moved here from Pennsylvania for my dad's job at the Marriott. We later moved to another town in South Florida where I grew up. After earning a bachelor's degree from FSU, I moved back to South Florida, where I got married and raised my children. You might know me already from my Hurricane Irma live videos or from one of the many other live videos over the past few years, as I've highlighted the places, people, and businesses that make Marco so great, or from the beautification committee as the Arborday Chair and the traffic box wraps that you see around the island. Here are a few things you might not know. Prior to moving back to Marco seven years ago, I had a twenty-year career as a nonprofit executive, working directly in our community, helping people live better lives. I'm a certified master naturalist and certified as a stormwater sedimentation erosion control inspector. I'm committed to the environment and keeping the waterways clean. I'm running for city council to keep Marco a great place to grow up, to make a living, and to retire. I can only do this with your help. No one candidate or citizen can do it alone. We are all a team, not only on the council, but us, the people of the island. I've seen us be great, helping others every day in countless little ways. We are a friendly place. People always comment on our friendliness. Let's keep Marco that place that doesn't exist anywhere else in the world for us, our children, and our grandchildren. United we stand, divided we fall. Though some issues divide us, let us join together to respectfully find solutions as a team. Please vote for me, and let's keep Marco great together. Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time tonight to listen and get to know me.
Thank you. Mr. Rola.
Good evening. I'm Joe Rola, currently on your planning board and have been for the last four-plus years. I'll go over a little bit about my background. Technically educated, I have a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering, and I did my graduate work at University of Pennsylvania in computers and computer software, and I have about twenty years of, towards my degree, in intuition and common sense from the streets of Philadelphia, where I was born and raised. I'm experienced. I've been on Marco Island for twenty years, a full-time resident for fifteen. I was treasurer and the IT director for Marco Island Property Owners and Marco Island Homeowners from 2009 to 2013, and I've edited my own mass mailer discussing Marco Island issues from 2013 till today. I'm skilled as a manager, I'm a critical observer, a hard worker, and I work my civic tasks as a job, because to me they are. They're not just a position. I'm technically astute, and I'm driven to protect the interests of the residents. To me, it's all about quality of life and peaceful use of your property. I believe, and many of the residents believe, in the comprehensive plan vision statement, a small-town tropical paradise with sufficient businesses to serve the needs of the residents. Thank you, and I want to ask for your vote during this election period.
Thank you. Now we'll move into our question series. Mr. Blana, you have the privilege, honor, scared of being the first. Question number one, short-term rentals. The large volume of daily and weekly rentals in areas as owned, single-family residential is changing the uniqueness of our island. What do you suggest to solve the short-term renter problems that are felt by year-round residents?
Well, it's very timely, because on Monday, we passed a vacation rental ordinance, and I wanted to make note of the fact that it's not called a short-term rental ordinance. I don't really believe we have a problem with short-term rentals. I don't think there's inherently anything wrong with people choosing to rent one, two, or three days, or owners choosing to rent their properties one, two, or three days. And the vacation rental ordinance will actually cover a span of up to thirty days. I attended the meeting at the city council, and I accepted the task force's report that Dr. Lucius presented, which clearly outlines the limitations we have as a city, what we can and cannot do. Given the fact that we clearly cannot limit the duration and the frequency of short-term rentals, we need to focus on what we can do for all vacation rentals. And her report listed three concrete things we could do that I support. One is to enforce existing ordinances for noise, trash, and parking, and added on to that is a, they added two riders. One was to add a brochure for renters and owners, and another is a webpage detailing all of the ordinances and the things associated with renting. The second thing is having an inventory of rental properties with a complete, complex locating information on the owners. Now, there were two options presented. One was to rent a database that will give us that information, or two was to enact a very onerous, burdensome registration process, which I think isn't the way to go. So I support the first system of using the computerized database. And then lastly, I would support looking into a BTR, which was discussed very shortly, a business tax receipt, also called an occupational license. If we can enact that, and I don't care what ordinance we put it in, it gives us the ability to really focus on those problem party house renters and to temporarily suspend that license. Again, I'd like to explore that. I think it might be an option that is something that we could go with.
Thank you. Mr. Graffoni, you have a different question. Assisted living facility. At Marco Island is home to a large number of aging residents, many who will need assisted living and possible memory care. Would you support an assisted living, memory care facility? If yes, what is your opinion as to proposed location on the NCH property?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Bill. I actually had the unique opportunity as the only person on our city council to really get into this issue over the last year. We had a property, an applicant come forward and ask to build a ALF, an assisted living facility, on the corner of Bald Eagle Drive and San Marco Road. That project that went through the city process, went through the planning board, came to the city council, really did not meet our land development code. It was too big, it had too much going on, they were requesting variances to the code, and when it came in front of the council, I was one of the individuals who voted against it. But at the same time, I said that if a project came back to us that met the code and that really fit into the community appropriately, that it clearly would meet a reasonable need on Marco Island as a community that has a lot of elderly residents. So we owe it as a duty, not only morally, to review any type of project that comes before the city council, but we have a legal duty to give every project that comes in front of us the opportunity to present their case and to look at it and determine, is it in the best interest of Marco Island, and does it meet the code? If we see any project that comes in and say, you know what, we don't really like it, I don't like this, I don't like that about it, but you know what, does it meet the code? Does it follow the law? We have to be very, very careful when we look at projects like that. So if a project was to come in front of us, and there may be another one coming soon that does apparently meet the code based on what's been reported publicly, we would have to give it very, very serious thought. And again, on its face, I would not say no to a project like that, but we really need to get into the details. Not only do we owe it to the city as a whole, but we owe it to every individual member of our community, especially those who are elderly, who are worried that a loved one may not be able to live on Marco Island anymore, who may not be able to see their friends anymore. So I think there's a reasonable need here, but at the same time, it's going to be very project-specific, and if you look at the ten acres that are on the corner of, excuse me, Bald Eagle and San Marco, that might be a spot if it meets the appropriate codes and is presented to the community in a way that's acceptable.
Thank you. Mr. Hindle. Amendment two, minimum wage. Amendment two is on the November ballot, which proposes to increase the Florida minimum wage for employees to $10 effective 2021 and to $15 an hour by 2026. What is your position on this and its impact on the small-business community, especially in the light of the challenges that small businesses have faced during this past year?
Well, Mr. Morris, I forgot to tell people my qualifications, so I'm going to back up a little bit. I have a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering. I was a process chemical engineer. Have a law degree from the top law school in Florida, University of Florida, now ranked number twenty-four in the whole nation. Same law school Mr. Morris went to. I'm a, I was a member of the Waterways Advisory Committee for six years and did a lot of work on that. I'm also a registered patent attorney, a board-certified civil trial lawyer, a member of three state bar associations. Florida for about thirty-five years, a member of California Bar, presently inactive, and Mississippi Bar. Took tests in all of those venues, one-time passer. Clearly the most qualified educationally, experientially, to address the issues of Marco Island. Now, you're asking me a question about something we'll never vote on. This is a panel discussion for local issues, and I'm not sure why you gave me that minimum wage question. It's really befuddling me. I want to talk about short-term rentals. I want to talk about water quality. I want to talk about real fiscal responsibility, so our island can spend money appropriately. As far as minimum wage, don't, please don't ask me a question I'm not going to have to vote on. It's not going to concern me, and it's going to concern me, it's going to concern our island, but I have no venue or jurisdiction over it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin. The environment. The listed species ordinance approved in 2019 carries a first offense fine of $150. Some consider a $150 fine associated with destroying the habitat of the gopher tortoise and/or the burrowing owl the cost of doing business. What do you suggest be done to discourage destruction of listed species habitat, if anything?
What a great question. Yeah, we live in such a unique environment on Marco Island. We've got burrowing owls, we have gopher tortoises, we have birds, we have all kinds of birds, eagles and ospreys and all sorts of habitats, so we really live in their habitat, which I find very interesting. In fact, all of Florida is like that, but we actually have a little bit more. So, yeah, it's extremely important for us to protect all of our wildlife here in Marco Island, and there are ways to do that. I wanted to say that, it's funny, the burrowing owls actually love living with us. That's a, their populations doubled last year. The baby owls' populations doubled. So we've got a wonderful coexistence with our animals. As far as people purposely destroying habitats, of course, I think that should be met with strict penalties, and I think education is always the key when we're talking about people moving here, people building. A lot of people didn't grow up here like I did, and they don't know, so I think education is really important as well.
Thank you. Mr. Rola. Code enforcement. You observe a clear and consistent code violation in your neighborhood over weeks. What would you do? And what would be your strategy for code enforcement and the code enforcement department for Marco Island moving forward?
Well, I'll tell you what I've done. Over the last three years, I just watched people park multiple cars in their driveway. That's perfectly legal, except they start parking across the pavement or parking in the swales overnight, and I just took pictures and did nothing because I didn't want to pick up the phone and have a potential conflict with my neighbors. But then I looked at what the city chief has done, the new chief, Franzano, and she started to enforce the code, and that's made a big difference in our neighborhood. So, in essence, I would say strict code enforcement. You tell people, give them a warning, but after that, strict code enforcement, and don't expect the average person to get up and do battle to solve a problem that they didn't create. That's my recommendation. Strict code enforcement.
Thank you. Now we move on to round two. Mr. Blana, we're back to you. As Marco Island is home to a large number of aging residents, many who will need assisted living and possible memory care, would you support an assisted living, memory care facility? If yes, what is your opinion as to proposed location on the NCH property?
I've attended both of the workshops that have been put on by the developer who submitted the proposal last year. Last year, if you remember, the proposal for the development on the NCH property was defeated in city council, and there were some very specific reasons why city council knocked it down, including height and setbacks and things like that. And the new proposal that they're presenting on that same site really corrects all of those deficiencies as well as deals with issues that homeowners brought up, such as traffic, noise, density, intensity. I asked the developers specifically about stormwater management, and they had very detailed plans for dealing with stormwater management. They have a very detailed plan for evacuating people off the island in the event of a hurricane. They have their own contracting that they use with their own buses and other facilities off-island that they'll house people. So they've kind of thought through all of the issues that were stumbling blocks last time, and it's going to be interesting to see. I like that location. Be interesting to see how it, as it works its way through the city staff, to see how the city staff reacts to their plans, to the planning board, see how the planning board reacts to the plans, and then ultimately to the discussion among my colleagues on the city council, should I get elected. I think armed with all of that information, I'd be able to make the best-informed choice that I could.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Graffoni. Amendment two, minimum wage. Amendment two is on the November ballot, which proposes to increase the Florida minimum wage for employees to $10 effective 2021 and to $15 an hour by 2026. What is your position on this and its impact on the small-business community, especially in light of the challenges that small businesses have faced during this past year?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Morris. That's a great question, and it actually is extremely relevant to us here on Marco Island. I'm a husband, a father, a small-business owner, an attorney, and a community leader, and I can tell you right now that for the small businesses on this island and for our workers on this island, that minimum wage, Second Amendment, Amendment two, makes a big difference. It's going to make a big difference to our island economy, it's going to make a big difference to our business owners, it's going to make a big difference to the people who come to work every single day on Marco Island. We talk a lot about how we don't have work, we don't have a lot of workforce, individuals who live on the island, who come to our restaurants and work, who come to our local businesses and provide the services that we all desperately need and enjoy as a community. So when you look at Amendment two, it's something very, very important. As a city council, are we going to vote on whether or not Amendment two applies here on Marco Island? Absolutely not. However, but as individual voters and people who are involved in this community, we need to be cognizant of what's going on, not only in the state of Florida, but also right here on Marco Island. So, having served on the city council, being a small-business owner myself, and having just helped navigate our community through the beginning and middle stages of COVID-19, I can tell you right now that forcing a minimum wage hike on Marco Island at this point is not really the best strategy. But we do need to find a way to address the needs of those who work on Marco Island who can't afford to live on Marco Island. So when we look at government regulation, when we look at our tax rate, we need to take all of that into account. A $50 tax hike on property tax might not make a difference to some people, but it makes a world of difference to everybody else. And right now, we need to make sure that our economy stays strong on Marco Island, that our businesses continue to be able to operate safely and appropriately, and Amendment two, at this point, is not going to be the right decision for Marco Island, or frankly, the state of Florida. But it is something that we need to pay close attention to and to continue to look at as we go forward. I can tell you right now, as a small-business leader, that most of the businesses on the island are over and above minimum wage, so we need to continue to look at that and address it in a free-market perspective rather than top-down in the Florida Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hindle. The environment. Listed species ordinance approved in 2019 carries a first offense fine of $150. Some consider a $150 fine associated with destroying the habitat of the gopher tortoise and/or burrowing owl the cost of doing business. What do you suggest be done to discourage destruction of listed species habitat, if anything?
Well, the minimum wage is not going to help that, I guarantee you. And these are the things we need to be talking about, what we can do with the people on this island and help them. See, I'm not going to be out there politicking about minimum wage. I want to be right here helping the people on the island with their water problems, with their short-term rentals. That's where I'm going to be doing. If I could, I would pay way more than minimum wage, and, but I can understand your point. I hope you understand why I don't want to answer that question. It's just not in the prerogative of a city council person. It's not what we do. We're here to help Marco Island, not to get higher office, to go to Tallahassee, or use this as a stepping stone. We're here, right here, to focus on what we're doing. I'm not sure about these other gentlemen, what their goals are, but my goal is to be right here helping with your water problems. As far as your listed species, yes, we got burrowing owls, we got the gopher tortoise, beautiful things, great creatures. I love them. I love to watch these perky-eyed burrowing owls. Everybody loves them on Marco Island. Some people don't. You know, it's really horrible when somebody in the real estate community puts mothballs down the holes. I mean, there's no, there should be some jail time for that. That is vicious. But what we do is we educate, for one. Let's get out there and talk to new residents about these. one. Let's get out there and talk to new residents about these. Let's have a more community approach. Let's have a very friendly city government, even more than it is. We've got great people. We want to welcome them and give them information on the gopher tortoises and the burrowing owls. And we can do this. You know, we can do this. We can work and keep Marco strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin, code enforcement. You observe a clear and consistent code violation in your neighborhood over weeks. What would you do? And what would be your strategy for code enforcement and the code enforcement department moving forward?
Okay, I'm glad I heard that question reread, because I didn't understand it the first time. But what you're asking is if I'm in my neighborhood, and I look across the street and see my neighbor, or something, say there's a crack in the sidewalk or whatever, there's something that's consistently happening. If it was with a neighbor, it depends on the neighbor, but I might tell them. Or if it was something that was dangerous or perilous, then I would call code enforcement. Does that answer the question?
You answered the question. And let me remind you of the second part of the question. What would be your strategy for code enforcement and the code enforcement department moving forward?
Oh, okay. All right. So the code enforcement department, I feel like they have a pretty big task, because there are so many of them, and we have a good-sized island. I feel like we have an obligation as citizens to keep our island safe, and I would like to make sure that the code isn't just penalizing people punitively, but I would think that their main objective would be to keep people safe.
Thank you. Mr. Rola.
Yes, sir.
Short-term rentals. The large volume of daily and weekly rentals in areas owned single-family residential is changing the uniqueness of our island. What do you suggest to solve the short-term renter problems that are felt by year-round residents?
Well, to begin with, I would like to see us take a step back and find out how we got to where we are. There's statements being made, city council meetings, planning board meetings, and amongst the public, and even in the newspapers, some of which are correct and some of which aren't. And I'd like to see us zero in on what are the things we can really do. I'm virtually tired of hearing, oh, we can't do this because the state has preempted us. I haven't seen a document that said somebody from Marco Island has petitioned the state to allow us to grandfather our existing code, which was established in 2001. I want to see that. I want to, and then I want to determine what we can do moving forward to try to accommodate the small mom and pops that are trying to just rent out their home to cover expenses? Or are we dealing with corporations that are just going to inundate our island and thumb their nose at us? Now, what would I do about it? That's a good question. I think I would get the people involved, the residents, they vote. And they're the ones that I'm most concerned about. They're up in arms now about their quality of life, and I can understand that. And we have to solve that problem immediately. I personally agree that we should stay with enforcement of that we have a new noise ordinance, and city council said at their last meeting that they would revisit it in six months, and Eric Breznek said, we'll revisit it in 30 days if we have to. That's the right attitude. Let's take a look at our ordinances, make them realistic, and enforce them.
Thank you. That ends round two. Let me remind our viewers at home that you've heard all the questions that we've got so far to ask our candidates. If you have an additional question that you think would be of interest or that you're just curious about, please email that to the email address on your screen as you view the program. I'm moving on to round three. Mr. Blana, amendment two, minimum wage. Amendment two is on the November ballot, which proposes to increase the Florida minimum wage for employees to $10 effective 2021 and to $15 an hour by 2026. What is your position on this and its impact on the small business community, especially in light of the challenges that small business has faced during this past year?
I agree with Councilman Gaffoni. I do not support increasing the minimum wage. I think that is an issue that is best left to the business owners. And you can see the devastation that we suffered on Marco Island. We have lost many small businesses. We have businesses where people have worked their entire lives, putting all of their energy and all of their money and putting all of their retirement funds sometimes into these businesses, and they're teetering on the brink. I think we need to allow them to determine what salary is that they can afford to pay. And I think that, so far as Councilman Gaffoni has said, most of the salaries of our small business owners are very competitive and exceed the minimum wage. So I don't think government has a role in that. I think that is purely a free-market capitalist decision, and I do not support it.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffoni, the environment. The listed species ordinance approved in 2019 carries a first offense fine of $150. Some consider a $150 fine associated with destroying the habitat of the gopher tortoise and/or burrowing owl at the cost of doing business. What do you suggest be done to discourage destruction of listed species habitat, if anything?
Thank you, Bill. It's a great question. Marco Island has a very unique environment. We've got some wonderful species on our island that you're not going to really find anywhere else, at least in the numbers and in their integration within the community, like the burrowing owl. When the endangered species ordinance came up to our city council, I voted in favor of it. It expanded the habitat and the protection zone around gopher tortoise burrows, burrowing owl burrows. At the time, I said, you know, there's more that we can do. When you're talking about $150 fine, that probably is not going to deter someone who has malicious intent. So therefore, we really need to work not only at the city level to increase fines for those with, you know, wanton, reckless, negligent conduct, intentional conduct, while at the same time making sure that we're not penalizing $1,000 or $5,000 to a citizen who does something unintentionally, who makes a mistake. It's a terrible situation, and we want to avoid that as much as possible. Education's great in that situation, a minimal fine. But for someone who does it intentionally, they need to be held accountable. But it's not just at the city level. We need to be working with the state authorities, who have far more power, far more ability, higher ability to fine, and the subject possibility of jail time. When I was on city council, I proposed the burrowing owl incentive grant program. So we punish offenders who do the wrong thing, but we reward people who do the right thing, by giving them a $250 grant funded by the people who do the wrong thing. And they voluntarily give up part of their property to allow a burrowing owl to come on. This program was unique in the state of Florida. It got united statewide, national, and international attention, because we need to be able to think outside the box and find good solutions to problems like this. So the burrowing owl program was honestly one of my favorite things that I've been able to accomplish on council. It was small on the grand scheme, but I think it's going to make a big impact in the cooperation, the interest, and the ability to integrate and protect species like the burrowing owl on Marco Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heindl, code enforcement. You observe a clear and consistent code violation in your neighborhood over weeks. What would you do? And what would be your strategy for code enforcement and the code enforcement department moving forward?
Well, it actually depends on what the violation you're talking about, clear and consistent code violation. If I saw somebody that might have a boat in their yard for a while, I probably wouldn't say anything. I'd hope it would be cleared up before long. Now, if somebody's out there blowing grass in our canals, polluting our waters, which happens day in and day out, we have been through this, and it's happened. There's little or no code enforcement for these type of issues. It's going on time after time after time. The fertilizer ordinance is not being enforced. These are very essential items for our waterways. Our waterways are impaired. Did I tell you that? I mean, the burrowing owls are great. I don't know if anybody's ever actually applied for that program. You know, I should have been given, I should have been given accolades for my work on the waterways committee. But you know what city council did? Absolutely nothing. There was no rewards for the fact that in 2015, I said, look, our waterways are going to be impaired. 2017, when Sam Young and I worked together, and we tried to get him to go to monthly water testing. Mr. Gaffoni didn't do anything about that. We need some rewards for people that are going to speak up for our impaired waters. It's going to cost us many, many, many dollars in the future. We don't need to be patting ourselves on the back like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin, short-term rentals. The large volume of daily and weekly rentals in areas owned single-family residential is changing the uniqueness of our island. What do you suggest to solve the short-term renter problems that are felt by year-round residents?
Yes, I completely understand what has happened this year. And as I've said before, I've lived in Florida, which is a tourist state, for 40 years, and I'm 50. So that is basically my whole life. And this past year, we had COVID, which is no surprise to anyone. So what that did was very unique and interesting in our community and in a lot of different communities. But in the summertime on Marco, we usually, people who own properties here may also own a place on a lake in Michigan or somewhere else up north. Well, instead of being there this summer, a lot of them stayed here in their house, and they had never been on Marco in the summertime before. So they might have assumed that it was quiet, or silent, or everything shut down. That never does happen in the summertime here, as the ones of us who are here in the summer know. And usually in the summer, we have visitors from Europe, South America, and other places in Florida. Those are our visitors. So this year, we didn't have the Europeans and the South Americans. We had other people from other places in Florida, and we had more people on our island living here. So what that did was it created a big stress response, and I feel like everybody has a valid point on this. What to do about it, I don't have enough time to get into it all, but I was at the meeting on Monday night. I feel like we made a really, really strong step in the right direction to having our ordinance, our noise ordinance strengthened. I feel like the Chief Frizzano is very committed to helping the residents and their neighbors get along and to quiet problem properties. I can tell you, no one wants problem properties, no Realtor, no rental management company, no owner of a vacation rental. Nobody wants bad renters. So this is not an issue that should divide. It should actually bring us all together to solve that specific problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rola, assisted living facility. As Marco Island is home to a large number of aging residents, many who will need assisted living and possible memory care, would you support an assisted living, memory care facility? If yes, what is your opinion as to proposed location on the NCH property?
Well, the demographics on this island do support having an assisted living either on the island or close by. It would seem logical. So I would encourage the proper-sized ALF, but it has to be at a location that concurs with our comprehensive plan and concurs with our codes. The ALF that was proposed a year and a half ago for the NCH property, it's a business operation. It's commercial. That property does not have density associated with it. That means you cannot plan a project for overnight residence on that property, unless we change our comprehensive plan and/or change our codes. And that's the main reason why it failed. Now, there's another property on the island called the Sinida Soleil. That's a much smaller project, and I'm not sure, I personally am not sure, when we say the demographics support an ALF on the island, the question is, how big? Is it the size of a Sinida Soleil project, a 26-unit? Or is it the size of the current project that's rumored 80 units? I personally would prefer that we start small and grow into something bigger if we have to. And there's other problems associated with running an assisted living on a barrier island that I'm not completely happy with.
Thank you. This is round four. Mr. Blana, the environment. The listed species ordinance approved in 2019 carries a first offense fine of $150. Some consider a $150 fine associated with destroying the habitat of the gopher tortoises and/or burrowing owls at the cost of doing business. What do you suggest be done to discourage destruction of listed species habitat, if anything?
Well, I think we've gone a long, we've come a long way already, just with Councilman Gaffoni's Adopt an Owl program. I think that program has done more to increase the awareness of burrowing owl habitat and the need to protect them. We have an owl watch contingent on the island now. We have 150 people who are stewards to help us keep track of these owls. So I think a tremendous amount is already being done, and I think they also serve a valuable public education function. So number one, I'm a trained public health educator. That would be my first approach. We need a very targeted, effective, endangered species, public education outreach program. Then I also agree with Councilman Gaffoni that we need to discriminate between unintentional, accidental damage to the environment and intentional damage by builders. And I think the fines for builders and others, I don't want to just say builders, but anyone who intentionally goes in and destroys an owl burrow, the fine should be way more than it is now. Lastly, I've been working with the Audubon of the Western Everglades, with a board member, trying to get a better understanding of this issue, and trying to also understand where we can expand our protective native habitat areas on the island, so that we can actually protect more of our endangered species. And I also have been reaching out to Conservation Cuyahoga to see if we can have another preserve on the island, similar to the Otter Mound Preserve. That won't cost us anything, and that will provide additional habitat and public education. Haven't been successful in my efforts to reach them, but I have been trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffoni, code enforcement. You observe a clear and consistent code violation in your neighborhood over weeks. What would you do? And what would be your strategy for code enforcement and the code enforcement department moving forward?
Sure, thank you, Bill. And just to correct some of the misinformation that was put out there, I voted for monthly water quality testing. We've, as a council, have prioritized more money for water quality improvements than any council in Marco Island's history, and that's a fact. And in 2018, I sat down with Sam Young in his home, with his wife Sheri and my wife Elsa, and asked him, Sam, you need to run for city council, because we need your strong voice for water quality to get out there, not just on the waterways committee, where sometimes you don't really hear about it, but on city council, and to put it out there as a priority. And it's no coincidence that when Sam Young got elected in 2018, Ferris Heindl was not on waterways anymore, and all of a sudden, in the past two years, we've made tremendous strides in addressing water quality issues, putting millions of dollars that I've proposed out of the Cuyahoga County sales tax, adopted by our council, towards water quality improvements over the next seven years. So we've got a lot going for us on water quality. It's not a two-year, three-year, five-year problem. It didn't start five years ago. It started 50 years ago. Now, to your question on code enforcement, I'll tell you, if someone's doing something in my neighborhood, depending on the severity of what it is, you know, let's be honest, if someone's grass is at, you know, a half inch higher than it should be, I'm probably not going to say anything to them, or I might just go ahead and give them a friendly conversation and say, hey, please pay attention, you know, maybe you want to cut your grass a little bit. If it's something serious, of course, we all, you know, have a duty to make sure that our community's safe and that nobody's put in any danger by some, you know, tremendous issue related to code. Chief Frizzano and our Marco Island Police Department, I think, have really stepped up on this. What's really important, though, and probably one of the main complaints that I've heard from citizens, is the enforcement needs to be uniform, and it needs to be consistent, and it needs to be equitable. So that's the number one goal. Make sure that, you know, my neighbor on one side isn't getting a citation, but my neighbor on the other side is not when they have the same problem. Let's be fair, let's be equitable, and let's make sure that we're enforcing it in a uniform standard and doing it in an objective fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heindl, short-term rentals. The large volume of daily and weekly rentals in areas owned single-family residential is changing the uniqueness of our island. What do you What do you suggest to solve the short-term renter problems that are felt by year-round residents?
Well, while it's still fresh in everybody's mind about water quality, I actually took Mr. Grifoni's answer to the microwave. It was just full of baloney. I sent it to Sam Young. I said, "Sam, what about this?" He said, "That's totally untrue." He had nothing, Jared Grifoni did nothing about that, had nothing to do with McNeese, absolutely nothing. Now, I've got, I've got the proof of that. Now, you heard him. He jumped on me, tried to claim that after I got off Waterways, everything was hunky-dory. That is totally not the truth, okay? And I'm ready to prove it. I'll cough up this email if I have to. Sam Young said he had nothing to do with those things that he bragged about in, in the microwave. That's what you got. That's what you're going to have on Waterway. Somebody that doesn't tell the truth. Somebody that actually tries to beat down somebody that worked for you on Waterways, that told you your waters were going to be impaired. Same way with short-term rentals. You know, Mr. Blana says, the tax receipt. I was the one that brought up the tax receipt Monday night. I said, "We've got to start somewhere. We've got to start with the tax receipt." I'm glad he was taking notes. We, we need a tax receipt. And so we do have a, a long way to go on, on short-term rentals. I've been accused, you know, I, I started out with a long paper. I sent it to the Board of Realtors. Some of you probably got it. I sent it to the president. It was a nice, easy paper to do. And I got attacked for that. I got called, "You're doing, you're going to ruin the economy, bloated bureaucracy." Nobody came back and talked to me and said, "Hey, that's, you want to cooperate with the Realtors? You're going to send that out to everybody?" No, I got attacked. We've got a long way to go on short-term rentals. We have the same old song and dance. I'll tell you what, this is a rerun enforcement. It puts you to sleep. That's what Mr. Grifoni said in 2016. He said, "All we have to do is enforce." He said 2017, 18, 19, and he's still saying it. What are reruns for? They put you to sleep. We need to take some real action on short-term rentals. We don't need to be put to sleep. Our island's in trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Heindl. Ms. Irwin, assisted living facility. As Marco Island is home to a large number of aging residents, many who will need assisted living and possible memory care, would you support an assisted living, memory care facility? If yes, what is your opinion as to proposed location on the NCH property?
Yeah, I think that, I believe that if it fills a need in the community for the Marco Island residents, that it should be given proper and fair consideration. I like that the current plan is more user-friendly, I think, and fits better on the property that it's designated for, right there at the corner of Heathwood and San Marco. I actually met with them, and I know that the current plan, it actually includes an environmentally sensitive building with some LEED elements, L-E-E-D elements. And then the waterfront park that's included as well is very nice. It increases our usable green space and allows the public, public to access that waterway. So people who enjoy using the waterways, kayakers, you know, paddleboarders, will have a central location to launch from, and they can really enjoy that, that aspect of our island. Another very important part of this is that they are planning to build a brand-new, state-of-the-art 24-hour medical facility, which I feel like is very important. My dad lives on the island. I live here, and, and he lives here. My mom passed away 11 years ago or so, not nine years, I don't know, nine years ago. But my dad is by himself, and I'm his only family member here on Marco. And I know that there are a lot of people my age who are here to help their parents. So there are also a lot of people here who don't have kids to help them. They might rely on a spouse or someone else. And when the time comes, which it does to many people, it is very important to have skilled facility here to take care of our islanders. And that's what we're talking about here, is our very own neighbors.
Thank you. Mr. Rola, Amendment Two, minimum wage. Amendment Two is on the November ballot, which proposes to increase the Florida minimum wage for employees to $10 effective 2021 and to $15 an hour by 2026. What is your position on this and its impact on the small-business community, especially in light of the challenges that small businesses have faced during this past year?
Well, I do agree with some of the other speakers that said this is not within the purview of city council, you know. But I will make a statement that says, we are in a Corona year, and there is no guarantees that we will not be in a Corona year next year. Increasing the minimum wage is not a good idea for the business community. And it will have an adverse effect on the business community i- if we do that at this point in time. I think that deserves a little bit more thought as to when that occurs. It probably should occur, but not until our economy locally and nationwide is settled.
Thank you. Candidates, we're now moving to the last round of our prepared questions. Once again, we start with you, Mr. Blana. Code enforcement. You observe a clear and consistent code violation in your neighborhood over weeks. What would you do? And what would be your strategy for code enforcement and the code enforcement department moving forward?
Well, again, I think we're talking about two different issues. If it was a minor violation, like, let's say I had a neighbor who had a, his car parked on his lawn, and he had a boat or a kayak on his car, and his lawn was really unkempt and not taken care of properly, I might just go up to him and say, "You know what? Can you put the boat away, put the car in the driveway and take care of your lawn," and kind of leave it at that. When we're talking about code enforcement from the city's perspective, I support increased, stepped-up water-based and land-based code enforcement. I've talked to, I've interviewed the chief of police, and I've interviewed Detective Bear, Captain Bear, who's in charge of code enforcement. These folks have six half-time positions to monitor nuisance complaints from grass to cracked sidewalks to beach violations, to illegal dumping in the canals, to monitoring the fertilizer ordinance, and, and a hundred and one things in between. They are stretched to their limit. So I think we need to increase code enforcement in terms of the number of, of full-time equivalents. But I also think we need to pick up a couple of inexpensive SKIFs and have two marine police officers, one patrolling the south end, one patrolling the north end, to work cooperatively with the land-based officers. Think if we do that, we'll be able to catch a lot of violators. And as Captain Bear said, do a lot of education. You're out on the water, you see somebody doing something inappropriate on the property, you pull over and you say, "You know what? You're not supposed to be doing that." Really have some community policing on both the water and the land.
Thank you. Mr. Grifoni, short-term rentals. The large volume of daily and weekly rentals in areas owned single-family residential is changing the uniqueness of our island. What do you suggest to solve the short-term renter problems that are felt by year-round residents?
Sure. One thing that's really important to remember is there are certain things that the city can do, and there are certain things that the city cannot do. The Florida State Legislature has assumed a significant portion of authority over regulation of short-term rentals based on their duration and their frequency. So we, as a city council, can no longer regulate that in any way. That's an issue that's handled by the Florida Legislature now. So contact with our representatives, like Bob Rommel, who I have a great working relationship with, with the new representative in District 80, likely be Laura, Laura Mello. Byron Donalds will be in the United States Congress pretty soon, so he's no longer in District 80. But working with those representatives and Senator Kathleen Pasadomo to see if there's a solution to help localities and municipalities be able to get things, to provide some more of that authority back. So one thing that we can do, in 2015, this was before my time on city council, the city passed a new noise ordinance at the time. And that was being sold to the community as the solution to noise problems. The reality is, unfortunately, it didn't work out that way. So over the last couple of years, if you look at the statistics, the number of calls that have come in regarding noise, the number of citations that have been issued regarding noise have been pretty consistent. The last year, possibly due to COVID-19, we've seen a large increase in the number of complaints, and we've seen really a steadying number of citations issued. So when we attack the noise ordinance, which is one of the key problems that people complain about related to short-term rentals, particularly music after 9:00 PM, that's something that we've needed to address, and then we immediately got on it as a city council. I spoke to the city manager months ago and said, "You know, Mike, we need to really think about this noise ordinance because what we have on the books is not working." So we fixed it. And in six months, we're going to review it again and make sure that it's still fixed. And then we look at other problems, occupancy. We look at parking violations. We look at trash violations. There are a number of things that we can look at that exist on city books that maybe need a little tweaking to make them more enforceable. So when people call in when they have an issue, that they're not disregarded, but they actually get a result. And that'll help us long-term. And we need to continue to be open to look at these ordinance time, time and time again to make sure that they're fully responsive to our citizens' needs.
Thank you. Mr. Heindl, assisted living facility. As Marco Island is home to a large number of aging residents, many who will need assisted living and possible memory care, would you support an assisted living, memory care facility? If yes, what is your opinion as to proposed location on the NCH property?
Thank you, Bill. That's a very great question. I, I'm affiliated with, with a group of people that actually take care of aging people and, and that sort of thing. And it really works best when they're with their families, when they can be close to their families. It's really best if they're in their home. I mean, I'd really would like to see Marco Island, in fact, even the city, get involved and just find some of these home programs where we can work with people and keep them in their home. And, and that's, there are great programs out there, and it would apply to people that couldn't afford that. Mr. Grifoni said he was concerned about people that can't afford things. We need to think about those people that can't afford the thousands and thousands of dollars in the assisted living facilities. And I have made myself clear in the Micah Wave answers, and I, I'd suggest everybody take a look at those answers. They're not all true. I've already spoke to some of those from other candidates, but mine are all true. The, yeah, I have the evidence. But the, the assisted living facility here, the one that's being proposed, some candidates have already met with the developer and taken campaign contributions. I want to ask the people at home, is that right? Is it right to take campaign contributions? Is that going to cloud your judgment to meet with the attorney for the ALF? I think it would. Now, the first thing I'd do, I'd stay unbiased. Next thing I'd do is make sure that that ALF is for Marco Island and not to draw in people from all over. And I know how to do that. I've talked to the developer about that. He's saying, "Oh, we've got to have a five-mile radius because everybody has one." Well, Marco Island is unique. We can't do what everybody does. We can't continue to do what everybody does, destroy our neighborhoods, destroy our waterways. We've got to celebrate and preserve our uniqueness.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin, Amendment Two, minimum wage. Amendment Two is on the November ballot, which proposes to increase the Florida minimum wage for employees to $10 effective 2021 and to $15 an hour by 2026. What is your position on this and its impact on the small-business community, especially in light of the challenges that small businesses have faced during this past year?
Absolutely. I, I wholeheartedly agree with everyone who's expressed an opinion about the minimum wage. And I do believe, as a fiscal conservative, that it impacts our small businesses the most. So we really do, coming back from COVID, I mean, we are very fortunate that we didn't have riots in our streets and burning of our city and decimation of our businesses in that way. But we did have it in other ways, where we lost, we lost business and, you know, people had to really scramble to stay in business. So I feel like we, we do need to protect our businesses, and for that reason, I would be against raising the minimum wage.
Thank you. Mr. Rola, the environment. The listed species ordinance approved in 2019 carries a first offense fine of $150. Some consider a $150 fine associated with destroying the habitat of the gopher tortoises and/or burrowing owls the cost of doing business. What do you suggest be done to discourage destruction of listed species habitat, if anything?
In the case of developers and people trying to expedite construction, I think that fine should be a lot higher. It should be a penalty, and, and they should be exposed to their peers and their neighbors. In, in the case of, when I, when I look at the people on this island, I, I don't see, I don't see people raising their children to throw stones at, at burrowing owls or to chase them around, or to chase birds on the beach that are probably stressed, could be stressed from overwater flights. I, I think this is an education problem for our visitors. We need to do something to educate our visitors. And I thought about it, and I said, "At every public beach entrance, we have these little display cases that, that show you what birds are native to our area or what seashells are native to our area." We could, we could, at a very small cost, make up display cases like that, put them in the history museum, put them in the library, so that when people come to our island and are either, and at the beaches, and they walk in to see the beach, they see the display cases, and it would educate their, them and their children as to what would be normal behavior for our island. I'm pretty sure that, that the kids on this island get that kind of education from their parents and from the school here. But people coming in from outside, I think it would be a different story. So building these little display cases and positioning them in appropriate places would help that alleviate that problem.
Thank you. That concludes the five rounds of our prepared questions. And I'm happy to tell you that our audience at home has some additional questions for you. These we're going to ask one at a time, and we'll just go down the dais. Two minutes to answer these, just as you did the others. Mr. Blana, you are the pleasure of the first.
Okay.
There is an abundance of vacant commercial property. What type of businesses would you like to see fill these vacancies?
First of all, I would actually like to see the city council form another committee. And I like to call that committee the Business Development and Redevelopment Committee. And I'd like to see that committee made up of people from the business community as well as citizens and have them tell us what businesses they'd like to see. To me, having those undeveloped lots means that we're losing tax revenue, and we're losing potential opportunities to bring more businesses to the island that could provide essential services and provide fun services, more bars, more restaurants, more shops, more art galleries. So I don't think it would be my job as a city councilman to determine what businesses should start and thrive in our community. I think that should be left up to the business community and the citizens. And again, I'm a very laissez-faire capitalist. I think that the businesses that will work, will work. And I think those are the ones that will ultimately be the ones that we need and that will thrive.
Mr. Grifoni, you have the same question?
No, thank you. You know, I agree a lot with Dr. Blana. He, he mentioned, you know, it's a really interesting idea to form a, a business, a development and redevelopment committee, to bring in input from the city. I know, for example, there's, there's one lot in particular that is currently under development right now where there's, there's a business that's going to be going there that isn't necessarily on the top of everyone's mind. It's a, it's a bank, another bank. And some of the comments, "Well, why don't we have something like a Chick-fil-A or, you know, or Dairy Queen?" You know, and we've had some of those on the island before. But, you know, businesses like that. But ultimately, the response truly is, it's not the city council's decision, it's not the decision of four people on city council to determine what businesses belong or don't belong on Marco Island. It's up to every single citizen of Marco Island. And they're going to determine what belongs and what doesn't belong by spending their money at those businesses or not spending the money at those businesses. And they will rise or fall based on the merits. That's what the free market is all about. I believe in the free market. So it would be nice to see new businesses come to Marco Island by continuing to be a, a community that all, that is residential with the tourist element, but also that we have small businesses on the island that help us work all year round. Many residential island communities, they shut down after three months, six months. Nobody can live there. Nobody can work there full year. We have a very unique situation on Marco Island, and we need to maintain that. So let's keep the character of our community, but let's allow the development of lots in different ways so that citizens can enjoy different businesses that come here, that we can be an attractive environment that doesn't overly tax or penalize people for opening businesses. opening businesses. Let's give them a shot. Right now is not the time to be turning away people who want to come to Marco Island. COVID-19 has changed the dynamic for so much. When people come back in season this year, they're going to see a slightly different island. Now, we've maintained a lot of that business element. We've maintained the residential element. The tourist element, you know, remains to be seen. So when it comes to development, we need to have more of a hands-off approach, respect the character of the community, and allow businesses to rise and fall on their own merits.
Thank you. Mr. Heindl, same question.
Would you mind repeating it?
Not at all. There is an abundance of vacant commercial property. What type of businesses would you like to see fill those vacancies?
Well, I can tell you what I don't want to see, and that's recreational marijuana sold on Marco Island. I was one of two candidates on this stage that clearly supported the referendum that we don't want Marco Island to be a hub for the sale of recreational marijuana. I mean, we all knew that was going to pass, and we had to go through a referendum to do it. Mr. Grifoni, in 2019, Mr. Brezhnek said, look, that's going to pass. Let's don't put the community through this referendum. But he was adamant. I don't want that bill to pass. I don't want that bill to pass.
False, absolutely false.
He was adamant right there, talking to Chair Brezhnek. In fact, I have those recordings. So that's what I don't want, don't want recreational marijuana. And don't really want any, it's really hard to say. You know, we say, we talk about the free market, and then we try to jiggle the free market, and we don't want it to be so free. We might want to bring trolleys in from Walmart. How free is that? I know if we bring trolleys in from Walmart, what are we going to do? More trinket shops, you know, more trash on the beaches? You know, look at it. We have candidates that actually want to bring trolleys in from Walmart. So let's don't, if the free market is going to be free, let's free the people from all of these short-term party houses that are driving them inside. That's not a free market, like being trapped in your own house in a residential zoning community. A lot of things are said just rhetoric. But we are a community, and we need to respect, love, and honor one another. If people are having trouble like that, let's deal with it. Thank you.
Mr. Morse, can I just respond to that?
You have an opportunity in your concluding comments.
Oh, I was mentioned by name.
And you've taken the opportunity to go off topic and answering other questions. So we'll get to another question. Ms. Irwin, would you like me to reread the question?
Same question, sure. Reread it for me, thank you.
There is an abundance of vacant commercial property. What type of businesses would you like to see fill those vacancies?
As the first two answered, I am absolutely a capitalist and a free market, a laissez-faire capitalist at that. So I would definitely welcome businesses to come to Marco Island. I think that the citizens have spoken loud and clear that they do not want a recreational marijuana facility on Marco Island. So of course, that would be completely off the table at this point. I found it interesting, the comment about bringing trolleys from Walmart. Not sure where that came from, but I do know something about the trolleys. If anybody has been following, years ago, we had a parking committee that had been researching and trying to find solutions to the parking problem that had been nagging at the island, and they came up with the trolley as a really good idea. So they recommended that, and the city has been following through on that. I know Charlotte Roman was very involved in the trolley idea. And so that's coming, that came up to the city council a couple of weeks ago, and the county is actually going to be starting a pilot program with a trolley. And that is not to bring people from Walmart, for whatever reason that came up, but to shuttle people around the island and to different restaurants or places, beaches, everywhere that we would normally go. So I, as a resident, would be able to jump on the trolley and maybe go to Windexie and grab some groceries real quick. So, or to one of the new businesses on the island. I think that I would absolutely welcome new businesses to find Marco Island and to enhance our experience here.
Thank you. Mr. Rola, do you need me to read the question?
Yes.
Okay. There is an abundance of vacant commercial property. What type of businesses would you like to see fill those vacancies?
All right. We're not talking about redeveloping. We're just talking about filling vacancies, correct? That's my question?
The question from the audience at home, you'd have to ask the person who submitted it. I do not have.
All right, well, first of all, I don't believe in community redevelopment authorities. We had this discussion on the island over the years, and it was rejected by the residents over and over again. And I probably wouldn't encourage more commercial development on the island. As a member of the planning board, from time to time, I happen to check on things, and I find out that, say, at last December, we had 95 restaurants on the island, eating establishments. When we did the redevelopment for the Bixmore property, the in-town, the town center, that number was going to grow to 110. When I checked on liquor licenses, I think I heard something of the order of 243 liquor licenses on this island. Then I asked myself, from a planning standpoint, to satisfy the needs of the residents, how many, how many eating establishments do we need? How many liquor licenses do we need? How many marijuana stores do we need? And I keep thinking enough is enough. You have to control this growth of commercialism and scope it in terms of our island that's reaching build-out. And try to consider the quality of life of our residents.
Thank you. Second question from our audience. And Mr. Rola, we're going to start with you this time.
Okay.
We're going to go that way. What are your specific suggestions to address water quality?
To begin with, we paid a consultant a considerable amount of money. I'm going to throw out a number, $165,000, I think is the number, to investigate and try to locate the point sources of pollution of our waterways. And he's due to come back to us probably in the June or July of 2021 with his report. We don't have to do a lot between now and then, but there are certain common sense things we could do. We have, our swales are in disrepair. We could think about restoring some of the swales. As new houses are built, we could reset a swale with a certain depth to collect water and percolate that water and the pollutants it collects and not dump that water into our canals the way it's currently being done with the conveyance system that we have. The drains in our swales are sitting at the bottom of the swale. That means every bit of water that runs off your lawn with fertilizer on it hits that swale and doesn't collect. It runs immediately to that drain and is piped out to an outfall and dumped right in our canals. We could, we could take our public works director and say, take some of that money you have in reserve, get it through city council, through the budget, and raise those drains up so that they're not sitting at the bottom and destroying the concept of percolation, water retention and percolation of our swales. That would really make a positive effect immediately in our water quality.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin, what are your specific suggestions to address water quality?
Well, I've been actually working on this on the beautification committee for the past four years. We are actually in charge of communicating our fertilizer ordinance to the public. So we have been for the last four years. Every spring, we hold an event, a public event, to tell people and to educate people about, don't put grass clippings in the waterways, don't fertilize at the wrong time of the year. And everything that Mr. Rola just said is absolutely spot on. We actually, this year, had Marco Nature Night in February, and it was so well-attended, it was packed. This whole room was packed full of people. And within it, we had a stormwater erosion sedimentation control specialist come and speak. It wasn't me, but it was somebody who knows even more. And we had them come talk about how our actions on land affect our waterways. So I've been working on that for a while. I also wanted to say that, growing up in Florida, when, years ago, my husband, my ex-husband now, my husband and I owned an airboat, and we spent a lot of time in the Everglades and Lake Okeechobee and all around. And I don't know, a lot of people may not know that the Lake Okeechobee spills into the River of Grass, which is also known as the Everglades. The Everglades comes down the state of Florida and makes a slight turn and dumps out, and what we are as the 10,000 islands is essentially the delta of the River of Grass. So that's why we have this wonderful estuary, and our environment is so unique in all the world. So we've got a lot of, we also have whatever runs out of the state of Florida coming into our waterways and our natural environment. So we don't need to just keep grass clippings out of the waters, although that's very, very important. But we need to look at the whole system, work with the state of Florida, with Rookery Bay, with the others who are actually, we need to understand how the whole system works and then work on what we can control as well.
Thank you. Mr. Heindl, what are your specific suggestions to address water quality?
Thank you. I'm very well-qualified to answer that. I'm a former chemical engineer, attorney, took water law way back in the University of Florida Law School with Dean Maloney. Maybe you remember that name. Look, he's smiling, he remembers Dean Maloney. It's good to get a smile out of somebody. But, yeah, I know a lot about water quality, and people that know my work would never accuse me of, when I drop off the Waterways Committee, everything got hunky-dory. That's just, here's an engineer wrote on my Facebook page, I'm not going to give his name. He says, I find it despicable that all other council candidates besides Ferris Heindl are going to back growth and profit from real estate and ignore clean water initiatives. That's a community leader that said that. I'm not going to give his name. In 2017, I was the chairman of the Florida, of the Waterways Committee. Councilor Hoenig appointed me. Never had any problem other than the fact that council did not follow our recommendations. A report from Terrell Hall back there says, should nitrogen levels begin to increase, it would be useful to create a detailed loading model in order to develop appropriate management responses, a loading model. That's a technical term. Don't know if my other colleagues understand this. But in 2015, I said, we've got to get a water waste plant. Council didn't go for it, didn't say anything, didn't do anything. 2017, Sam Young and I, we've got, we had workshop after workshop. We've got to go to monthly testing. City council denied that. Now, specifically, what we need to do, for what, well, you need somebody that can have leadership on city council, like me. Specifically, we're five years late in getting our Harper study. I'd like to debate all of these candidates on that issue. I challenge them to an hour-long water quality debate, but my time's up.
Thank you. Mr. Grifoni?
Thank you.
What are your specific suggestions to address water quality?
Absolutely. And just to quickly address some of the misinformation out there, it just, it needs to happen. Fact of the matter is, recreational or non-medical cannabis is already illegal in the state of Florida. It's been illegal in the state of Florida for decades and decades. The referendum that was brought in front of city council, it was an important issue, and the public needed to weigh in on it. I believe in listening to the citizens of Marco Island and honoring their vote when they go to a referendum. And there's been two referendums on city council since I've been in office, and I've honored both of them, and I always will. So the interesting thing about the ordinance was that it needed to be fixed, the recreational ordinance. It was broken. It banned flower shops, it banned pool supply stores, it banned hot tub stores. It was a mess. The PAC agreed. We worked with the city attorney to fix that ordinance, and we just voted for it twice. Not only did I vote to put it on the ballot to ask for the citizens' opinion, but I voted for it twice to authorize it and get it now in our books for Marco Island. So that's the truth of the matter. When we're talking about water quality, again, I voted for the Dr. Harper point source proposal. I think it was a great idea. I voted in the budget to fund swale analysis, to fund median remodeling, to go to monthly water quality testing. In our water quality workshop on Marco Island, I proposed an adopt-a-canal program, which is obviously a low-cost solution to help out. I went to our water quality workshop with the Collier County Commission and the City of Naples council members. Some people weren't there for that. I was there for that. And what's really important is you do need to be able to work with others. And falsely accusing people of things and just thinking you can get away with it is not a good way to develop a positive working relationship for the community. Becky Irwin is 100% right. We need to work with the state and local leaders because this is not just a Marco Island problem. It's a state of Florida problem. It's a Collier County problem. It's a Big Cypress problem. We're at the bottom of that drainage basin. And if we don't work with the people who can help up there, no matter what we do on Marco, isn't going to make the differences that we need. Now, we need to continue to work on that. We need to continue to get this report from Dr. Harper. And we need to continue to fund water quality projects, which is why I proposed millions of dollars from the Collier County sales tax go to water quality over the next seven years. That's more money than has ever been spent like that on Marco Island, and it needs to be done because it's an important priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blana, what are your specific suggestions to address water quality?
Excuse me, I agree, oh, excuse me. I agree with Mr. Rola about the problems that we're having and that we need to wait and see what the results are of the water quality testing program that's going on with Dr. Harper. What I would do, once those results are back in, is work with the city to develop a very targeted, specific plan, a remediation plan based on the results of that study, rather than just waste money when we don't know exactly where our major problem is. In the meantime, what I would do, as I mentioned before, is support stepped-up code enforcement activities both on the land and on the water. I would support adding into the budget water-based vehicles and marine officers to patrol. And I would also, I spoke to the, I met for two hours with the city grants administrator as well as with the stormwater manager and with Tim Pinter. And there are grants available, specifically, there are grants available through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, a division actually called the Division of Water Restoration Activities. They have many, many grants for both point source and non-point source contamination. We have been designated as probably being a non-point source contamination problem. So I spoke to her about applying for some of those grants, and I think we have a good chance to get them. If I got that grant money, I would give more of it to Mr. Pinter and let him go to town on getting those swales upgraded and fixing the whole infrastructure of the stormwater catchment basins, including the drains and everything. So I think, you know, those are things we can do immediately, and when we finally get the results of Dr. Harper's study, then we can plan a very targeted remediation plan.
Thank you. Our third question from our audience, we'll start with you, Mr. Grifoni. What is your position on installing permanent license plate readers on the Jolly and Goodland Bridges?
Sure. That's a great question. I had some concerns about installing the permanent license plate readers on the bridges for a few reasons. Number one, there's some privacy concerns there. We have a constitution, we need to make sure we honor it always. Secondly, there's actually an ongoing lawsuit in the city of Coral Gables regarding automated license plate readers, fixed automated license plate readers. That lawsuit has actually survived some of motion to dismiss by the city of Coral Gables. It's moving forward into discovery. It's a two-plus-year-long lawsuit right now, and there's a lot of time left to go. That costs cities a lot of money. We know that litigation costs a lot of money here in the city of Marco Island. So one thing we need to make sure is that we're not going into something and going to be, you know, spending $60,000 for a camera that's going to cost us $1 million in litigation over a five-plus-year period. So that was one concern that I had. When we actually voted on the, it was included in this year's budget. I voted for this year's budget in favor. So we should be getting those camera systems that'll be installed on the Jolly Bridge, on the Goodland Bridge, probably sometime, you know, within the next budget cycle, you know, fiscal 2021, which we're in right now. We actually have an item coming up on our next agenda, I believe, to award the contract for the cameras. So that's something that our citizens can expect. We do have, we have received, the city, a letter from an organization that has expressed a concern and has not threatened litigation, but has advised that it could become possible. So we need but has advised that it could become possible. So we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing, that we're not wasting taxpayer dollars, and that if we do install cameras, that there's, you know, safeguards in place to make sure that innocent people aren't being targeted. But if you've got a criminal who's doing something wrong, then there's a possibility that that's going to help, just like with the mobile unit that we already have. You know, we have camera systems on Marco Island, they're on some of our police cars, we've got mobile units on the island. So it isn't necessarily something different, but the difference between a fixed unit and a mobile unit could potentially spell some litigation concerns for the city. So we need to be very careful with that. But it is in the budget, it has been approved, and I did vote for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heindl, what is your position on installing permanent license plate readers on the Jolly and Goodland Bridges?
I grew up in a, in a small, rather small town in Mississippi, Maria, Mississippi, it's like 50,000 people. And you could go to, leave your door open at night, you felt safe, and then you could walk in your neighborhood and walk your dog at night, kids could play outside. You know, we kind of have that same feeling here on Marco Island, don't we? And that's really good. And how many places in the United States can you actually not worry so much if you don't lock your door? I shouldn't say that, but I've got nothing to steal. But you shouldn't, we have it good here. We have, and we have it even better when our police force, our chief of police comes up with innovative ideas like cameras that maybe scream for terrorists or something like that. But one thing that's decaying us is if you put a business, a little hotel behind my house and one after another, there's a renter and there's a lot of noise, how safe is that? And how safe are those houses, you know, that don't have any fire codes? You got a little business behind Joe Rola's, I'm just using his canal, and people come in, day in and day out, and nobody inspects for fire. It's a little hotel. I mean, a Marco Island person doesn't own it, somebody from up north, and they just see it as a business and they're ching, ching, ching. No fire code. What other business would be able to get away with that? None. So, yeah, we have work to do. I'm happy for that. But we have work to do. Our neighborhoods are going to decay. It's going to come to the point where I'm not going to be able to feel safe like I did in the Mississippi town, or when I first moved to Marco. If we don't get a hold of this problem, too many softballs have gone on this problem. The same old rerun, rerun in Forest, that was said back then. But nobody did it. Nobody did it. And so that's just to put us to sleep. We need to wake up and take charge of our island, make it safe again.
Ms. Irwin?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I'm going to repeat it. What is your position on installing permanent license plate readers on the Jolly and Goodland Bridges?
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm of two minds on this because on the one hand, I'm all for privacy, okay? I'm all for privacy. On the other hand, I'm a single woman and I'm also all for safety. So I do respect that the people are, our community is keeping our island safe by monitoring who's coming and going. On the other hand, you know, some people might not want to be monitored who are doing nothing wrong. So I, I'm glad that we are making our island safer. It's already in the works. I have, I have good friends in law enforcement who tell me, Becky, it's the best thing, you need it. Is somebody knocking?
Not me.
Oh.
It could be your phone.
Nope. So anyway, that's my answer. I support it. I support keeping our island safe, of course, at all times. I enjoy the safety of our island. And I know it feels safer than it probably actually is. If you ask our law enforcement, they do a lot behind the scenes that we never, ever hear or know about. And for that, I am truly grateful.
Thank you. Mr. Rola, what is your position on installing permanent license plate readers on the Jolly and Goodland Bridges?
When I, when I moved here, I remember telling my neighbor, who I just met, that I'm a rough-and-ready guy and I don't like rules and regulations. And he proceeded to explain it to me. He said, "Joe, as you get older, you're going to realize that these rules and regulations protect you and me and our investment on the island." And I thought about it for a microsecond or two and I, I accepted that. So the short answer is, I believe it's a safety issue on the island. I don't know what the future's going to hold for our country and our community, but having those license plate readers, I thought of a, an instant use for them. We have an issue where somebody writes a notice of violation against noise and hands it to somebody that doesn't live on the island, it's caused the noise, and rent it here. They go away and they don't, never pay. And everybody says, "Well, what can we do?" Well, we write a warrant against their license number, their car, and the next time they come to our community, and that picture of that license number, and it gets processed by NCIS, and it shows a warrant, and we arrest them. And we fine them again. And collect the fine this time. So the answer is yes, on board.
Thank you. Mr. Blana, what is your position on installing permanent license plate readers on the Jolly and Goodland Bridges?
This is one area where I disagree with my colleague, Chairman Gaffoni, or Vice Chairman Gaffoni. I fully support the license plate readers, as well as the fixed ones, as well as the mobile ones. I've spoken to the chief about it. I really think that she feels it will greatly enhance our ability to enforce everything from speeding tickets to delinquent people that are not paying their child support. So I feel it's a good thing. I support it wholeheartedly. I support all of the efforts of the chief and our effort to get the police department accredited, because I think a fully accredited police department will actually upgrade our recruitment, our training, our retention, and our, the ability to be competitive with outside police departments. So I fully support this.
Thank you. Our fourth question from our audience, we'll start with you, Mr. Heindl. Would you be in favor of a mask mandate for Marco Island, or if increased cases of COVID-19, would you be in favor of a mask mandate?
Say the loaded question for me. You know, I get emails from people and they say, "I'm not going to vote for you unless you pledge to support a mask mandate." And I say, I say, "Wow." You know, you know, look at, look at the way we handle ourselves and personal responsibility. Look, look at, look at all the candidates and what they do with their, I'm not going to talk about anybody else, but I can tell you, I didn't hold any meetings in violation of any, any standards. Certainly didn't have inside meetings and that kind of thing. I walked door-to-door with a mask on. I don't know what everybody else did. But I think we really first ought to look and see how we take personal responsibility for ourselves. I believe that. And I believe there, Marco Island, I mean, the grocery stores, you have masks there, they require it in all the grocery stores and just about everywhere you go. What I really want to do, you know, I want everybody to feel safe. And if everybody doesn't feel safe, I'm not doing my job as a city councillor. And we had this, there was an issue that came up for council, I hope no more do, but about the farmer's market. And they said, "Well, no, we're not going to require..." City staff came in and said, "We want you to have masks." You know, and our city is doing really, really good with COVID, really, really good. But the city council said, "Oh, no, we disagree." You know, why couldn't they have said, "Look, half the time you'll have masks, the other time, no masks." That way, there's a lot of people, a lot of elderly people can't get out of home and they won't go out without masks. Why do we leave them stuck during farmer's market? Just give them part-time where they mandate masks and let the others have no masks. That's, that's the kind of thing I would look at.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin, would you be in favor of a mask mandate for Marco Island, or one if increased cases of COVID-19?
Yeah, I am very happy to see that Marco is currently in the green phase with regard to coronavirus, meaning that the, the cases are not on the rise here. I agree with Ferris. I believe in civil liberties and personal responsibility and I'm against the government imposing restrictions on healthy, productive individuals. I also believe that everyone should be respectful of others' personal preferences. Some people are wearing masks here and some are not, and that is perfectly fine. I support the community setting the standards of what they expect with regard to masks, distancing, et cetera, like private homes, businesses, restaurants, shops, community groups, et cetera. So as a city official, as things are today on Marco, because we do not know what comes tomorrow, I think if we were last year, nobody would have ever predicted this. But I would be against shutdowns and government-imposed mask mandates unless something drastically changed. And at that time, I can't say what I would do unless I knew all of the facts. But with that said, I really encourage people to be patient and tolerant of each other and kind to each other and, and neighborly, like we are on Marco Island. In Marco Island, everybody is so friendly. I hear it all the time, how friendly people are. So I want us to remain that way in light of anything that comes our way. We're in this together. So that's what I would say.
Thank you. Mr. Rola, would you be in favor of a mask mandate for Marco Island, or one if increased cases of COVID-19?
To me, it's, it's a combination of a health and welfare issue for our residents and it's a demographic issue. When I look at the demographics of our island, 60 to 65% of our residents are vulnerable. They're, they're retirement age and above. And it will be that way for the foreseeable future and beyond. We have, the mask, I can't say, I'm not a doctor and I don't, I don't see the technology involved with the mask, but I can only say, it can't hurt. And when I look at, over the past five, five or six months, what happened, we tried to accommodate visitors coming in from outside. Next thing you know, if you say, "Come on down, our bars are open, our restaurants are open," and next thing you know, you get an increase in COVID cases, that's a problem. That's a problem for our residents and you shouldn't say to the majority of residents on this island, "If you feel vulnerable, just stay home." They should be allowed to communicate and walk around and feel safe. Without the mask, I don't think they will feel safe.
Thank you. Mr. Blana, would you be in favor of a mask mandate for Marco Island, or one if increased cases of COVID-19?
It's hard to answer the second question because cases, you know, how many cases? So I'd like to just address the first one. I'm definitely not in favor of a mandatory mask mandate. I like the voluntary mask, the way things are being held now. For example, doctors' offices, dentists, you know, most of the medical offices require a mask and people are complying on a voluntary basis with that without having a heavy-handed government approach mandating it. Similar things are happening with food stores. People go shopping in Winn-Dixie in public, those stores request that you wear a mask and the public has generally complied and there haven't been any problems. So I don't see any need to, again, to use a mandate from the government to control that. As far as outdoor risk, I think outdoor risk is minimal, especially on a place like Marco Island where we don't have a tremendous population. There's plenty of opportunities for social distancing on the beach, on the streets, and the germ itself just simply doesn't do well outdoors. So I think people who are engaged in, you know, walking or bike riding or rollerblading or whatever, as long as they're moving and they're not, you know, getting real close to people and breathing on them, I think the risk is minimal. Now, all of that said, personally, if I'm going over someone's house or I'm interacting with a neighbor who, or a friend who really is very afraid of catching the disease, I will wear a mask, whether it's indoors, outdoors, whatever they prefer. And I think that's just general respect. If you're around people who would like you to mask, you mask. I don't really see where it has to be a mandated thing.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffoni, would you be in favor of a mask mandate for Marco Island, or one if increased cases of COVID-19?
Yeah, that's a great question. And it's one that the city has been wrestling with for some time, really, the entire state of Florida and the nation in different ways. Dr. Blana makes a great point as well, so I certainly appreciate his input on that. And I'll tell you what, one thing that's really important when you look at the issue of mask mandates, other than, you know, the question of mandates in general, should government be telling people what to do if they're healthy? Can you enforce it, number one? Okay? Right now in the state of Florida, now that we're in phase three, and the governor has prevented fining for people who are in violation of mask mandates. So if you could put mandates on anything, the question is, can you actually enforce it, both constitutionally, legally, and in just the number of, of the amount of manpower that you have to get it done? But we really need to look at the facts. And COVID-19 is, it's been something that has, that nobody has fully anticipated, whether you were running for office four years ago, two years ago, or, or right now, you probably weren't fully immersed in it during your consideration of running for office. You look at the cases of Marco Island, our case count is tremendously low. That's because our citizens are personally responsible, they know how to be safe when they're inside or outside, and they do the right thing. Many of them will have personal respect. If somebody wants them to wear a mask, they'll wear a mask. If you want to go to a place without a mask, you can find plenty of places to go without a mask. So personal responsibility is important. You look at Marco Island compared to Collier County on a per 15,000 population basis, Marco Island's numbers are tremendously lower than Collier County or Key West, another island community with some tourist element. They even shut down US1. Their case count after their mask mandate shot up to the heavens. Okay? Marco Island has never had a huge increase in cases. Our numbers have been relatively flat. We did have some numbers go up in July, like everybody did, not only in Florida but across the country. So you have to ask yourself, what was the effectiveness of those mandates in the places that they actually instituted them? Compare Marco Island to Collier County, compare Marco Island to the city of Naples, compare Marco Island to Key West, compare Marco Island to just about anywhere. Our citizens have done a great job. Mandates aren't necessary if people are doing the right thing, and they are. And I trust them to continue to do that.
Thank you. We will share with all of our candidates, copy of the questions which were submitted by our viewers this evening, and will allow you to have a little bit more insight as to what some of our voters are concerned with. That concludes the candidates' questions. Each candidate will now have two minutes to present a closing statement. I'll start with you, Mr. Blana.
I've been criticized for coming to city council, running for city council, not having the experience of serving on a committee. And people have said, you know, "Why are you running?" And I really don't think that serving on a committee prepares you to become a city councillor. I've spent the last few years in training to become a city councillor. I have read all of the major city documents, the city charter, the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan. I have gone to 90% of the city council meetings. I've read every document and prepared to engage in every conversation in those meetings, and I've gone on record several times actually speaking in those city council meetings. I've seen the videos of the last 19 months' worth of planning board meetings and have learned a lot about planning by observing. I have interviewed all of the department heads in city government. I've spent over 100 hours and I've come to those interviews after reviewing their websites, making a detailed list of questions to get answered, and learning about what each city department does. I've attended both all-day financial meetings this year, budget meetings, and I've attended both all-day water quality meetings last year. In addition to that, I've spent a couple of hundred hours interviewing homeowners and residents and asking them, you know, what their main issues are. So I've spent an enormous amount of time learning about every department and every facet of this city. And I think that's prepared me pretty well to take a seat at the council.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffoni, closing statement.
Yeah, thank you so much, Bill, and thank you again to all the organizations who've helped put this together. I think it's tremendously informative for our citizens and it's one of the few opportunities that we can get together and really talk about the issues. So I'm really glad we've been able to do that. I'll tell you what, when I ran for office in 2016, it was the first time I had ever run for anything before. It was a unique experience, it was a fun experience, it was a rewarding experience. And it really gives you the opportunity to connect with the community even more than you otherwise would. I love Marco Island, my family loves Marco Island, my kids love Marco Island. It's just a great place to be. And it's truly an honor to be able to have served our citizens for the last four years. last four years, and I'm hoping that they'll trust me with another four years. I'm a true fiscal conservative. Look at my voting record. I have, I'm the only one here with a verifiable actual voting record on city council, not just talking about it, but when the pressure's on, what are you going to do? I've never voted to raise taxes once on Marco Island. I've voted to lower our property tax rates every single year. They're lower now than in 2011. That's tremendous. That's never happened before on Marco. I would challenge you to find it anywhere else in southwest Florida, perhaps even the entire state. We cut the communications tax by 60%. You know, it's about, you can talk all day about things that you want to do, think, you know, what you want to accomplish, but I actually had the opportunity, thanks to the citizens of Marco Island, to do it and to follow through on it. There's a huge difference between saying and doing, and I've had that honor, and I'm proud of my record. I'm proud of being able to put something up on city council, to propose a white paper, to see it through to fruition, and to get it passed. You can't do it. It's not a one-man job. You need four councillors at a minimum, sometimes five, to work together to find the common ground, to do the right thing for the community. I've had tremendous success doing that. Our citizens know that I'm proven, I'm positive, and I'm truthful. And they're going to, they can expect that for the next four years if they give me this opportunity. I've gotten it done from Marco Island, here on the island, in Collier County, at the state level. I'll do it again. Please visit JaredGrifoni.com, learn more about me. We couldn't talk about everything tonight. There's so much on there, and I hope you do that, and I ask for your vote and your support in this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heindl, closing statement.
Rich Blana, Sam Marco Rhodes. I'd like to speak in favor of my support of my friend Ferris Heindl. He and I have probably paddled every waterway on and around Marco Island, and have had some very spirited conversations about water and water quality. And Ferris probably knows more about water than anybody in the room for sure, and he's more committed to cleaning up these waterways than anybody I know. He's a hard worker, smart man, he's got the highest ethics you would want on the committee, and I have no doubt that he could learn everything he needs to learn about the land development code for other non-waterway-related items. I fully support his candidacy.
Thank you, Rich. That was Rich giving me a recommendation for Sam Young's seat. And Rich is a hard worker, too, very studious. I really resonated with what he said there about his preparation. But there you have it, straight from Mr. Rich Blana, who's actually running in, well, I won't go there. Look, it's really simple. I'm for Marco Island. I love you people. I mean, my heart breaks about some of you folks that can't go out on your lanai because it's too noisy. You can't enjoy your home because it's, you're afraid to go out. And I also feel for the people that, when you go in the backyard and look at your canals, there's a fish kill, there's debris, detritus floating, there's eutrophication of our waters. That's what I'm fighting for. Also, I'm a fiscal conservative. You know, I want to tell you what I'm going to do. My grandmother used to make pies, and we'd cut it up into eight pieces. And one of those pieces of pies, I'm being told to stop, but there's more to fiscal conservatism than, our rollback affects 16% of our property taxes. Take a look at Rick Woodsworth's article. We need to understand much more about fiscal responsibility. It's about watching out for spending.
Thank you, Mr. Heindl.
Thank you.
Ms. Irwin, closing statement.
Well, that was interesting, but I guess when Rich said that about Ferris, I wasn't in the room, that he knew the most about water quality.
Do you?
But anyway, our city, our nation, and our world are experiencing unprecedented times, so calm, cohesive, steady leadership will be key as we recover from the ravages of 2020. This is my first time running for office, and after tonight, I am really excited to get to work for you. You can count on me to work with everybody on this council for the benefit of Marco Island. I'm a fiscal conservative, a Florida master naturalist, I'm on the beautification committee, and for no other reason than I love this island. As you know, there are four seats available. It is in all of our best interest to assemble a council that respects you and each other, that can overcome personal biases and interests, and can work together on your behalf. I am one of those candidates, and I ask you to vote for me, to keep Marco a great place to grow up, to earn a living, and to retire. Thank you so much for your time and attention to this very important decision.
Thank you. Mr. Rola, closing statement.
I just want to say thank you so much for hosting this forum, the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Realtors, and MICA. It's a tremendous opportunity to get us here together, discussing issues, giving our views, so that the people at home can make a judgment of sorts. One topic that we haven't discussed, and it hasn't come up, is the update of the comprehensive plan. This is a very important topic, a very important topic at this instant in time, when we are approaching build-out, and we need, we need our residents to participate wholly in this process, not just a handful of people listening in on a telephone conversation, but finding out what is in the comprehensive plan, and how it affects, how it affects their island and their quality of life. And it definitely does. Our comprehensive plan from 2009 had 16 pages discussing things like density. Most people on the island don't know what density means. They don't know how it affects their life. They don't know how it affects the population of the island, or the intensity of traffic and use of our resources on the island. This is the time, we need the people to get involved and to discuss this particular important subject, because they're going to live with it for the next seven to 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Marco Island Chamber of Commerce, Marco Island Area Association of Realtors, and the Marco Island Civic Association, I thank all of our candidates for participating tonight. I particularly thank all of you for attempting to stay within your two-minute time limits, and attempting to actually answer the questions that were asked. It is rare in politics when we can find a candidate who attempts to actually answer a question with something other than platitudes, and you are all to be congratulated for that. I also thank the city of Marco Island for providing the facilities and staff to allow the three organizations to host this forum, and last but not least, our audience at home for watching, sending in questions, doing their best to become informed voters so they can elect the next city council. Thank you all, and good night.
Thank you.